Tutoring should begin as soon as they commit to expectations.
Would it not benefit the children in this category to try and increase the students that are getting that tutoring?
It could, and you know, some of the parents honestly, when they were offered, we had to do two rounds to make sure nobody was missed. And we extended one via letter going home with the kids, and then another one was mailed directly to the parents. So there was plenty of opportunity. Some of the parents' response to us was, well, we just want the school one. We want that direct connection with the school so our kids get more time related to what they're teaching in the classes. So even when it's offered to expand, then some said, no, thanks. We really want to continue working with our.
Sometimes there's a real disconnect between what the tutors are doing and the approach that's utilized at the school. And it can be confusing to a student, but other times it works very well. So it just depends. It's good to see.
How much? 20%? Would you estimate that, please?
Oh, you know, I have that number and I didn't write it down. I know that transportation kind of gave me a plan on what... I know we're going to be able to petition to have some of it go back to our schools. So that's the short answer. I don't have the exact dollar. Okay. Keep me on task.
There's just a lot to cover.
There is a lot to cover. District improvement plan, so as Larry mentioned, along with a number of districts in the state, most of them in fact have a district or are in their first year of improvement. So our plan aligns with our goal, our performance goals and measures. And then the school-based plan is aligned with that district plan. So that we've articulated exactly who's doing what part and when and how. And that way we are clear about what is happening for improvement.
I'm sorry, there were questions, but if Congress passes the ESEA reposition, will that whole section go away?
It could change or go away or do lots of things. Yeah.
That's a lot of things for sure.
Yeah.
But potentially.
Absolutely.
Or potentially, even if Congress didn't act and the Washington State Legislature passed legislation that would reinstate, that would allow the Department of Education to reinstate our waiver, this could all change its look.
Which is a little bit of what we're experiencing with LAP, because LAP is state-funded. So another significant amount of dollars.
Which was an increase from previously because of the changes in the law.
Thank you so awful when you try and add context, because I never know what I'm really doing.
You just want me to cut it out?
No. Nope, not at all. First service models right now under the Learning Assistance Program or LAP are K-4 reading, junior high and extra math class in middle and elective to make sure that they get the additional support. And then high school, the collection of that, some support goes there as well.
Are the LAP services choices are mandated by the state? Or are they district choices?
Well, it's kind of in this interesting, under key updates, you'll hear kind of an evolution that is actually coming out of the New York State Substitute Senate Bill, or I always mix that up. ESSB, probably what that stands for. But some legislation that's coming along, not only to districts, but to OSPI as a larger state. So I might get to that, but if I don't answer the question the way, you know, I'll try.
Well, I'll take a stab at it. The K-4 is targeted for reading. We didn't have.
That's a priority.
That's a priority. So they didn't ask if we wanted to do that. That was a mandate.
And we did have some more, why I'm kind of in this strange, like, trying to give context, is we did have some more latitude and now we're feeling a little bit more of a narrowing. If that makes sense. Still a significant amount of our LAP funds supporting staff. A major focus, which was very smart, was the level of literacy intervention and implementation of the Funtas and Penel kits in the last few years, just growing implementation of that, growing that program. Lots of very profound results will come out of that. And it's basically a targeted intervention where there's about three students and one well-trained teacher in a very connected program where you place the students and then move forward from where they are. So they get, when they get LAP services, kids get their grade level instruction plus an extra dose. And when those are related, like we were talking about with the other tutoring, you get more growth.
Great bank for your book.
Yes, it's great bank for your book.
And when we ran the summer program last summer, that's what we used, was the kits and really great results.
Grade outcomes. So under the key update with this legislation was, and we're in good shape on this as well, you can't have a strong intervention or support system when you don't have a strong general education curriculum as the foundation for all students. So with the reading program, that's comprehensive for all kids. And then the progress reporting changes that have gone into place, that was a lot of work and really essential. Those are like the bedrock for then layering on the interventions. Because if you've done that well, then you have fewer kids needing interventions. And if you've done the progress reporting with parents, they've tapped in as well for how they can support at home. So those are really key pieces that had to happen first. Then along come more focus on evidence-based interventions. There's an ELA Best Practices menu that's available at the state level and their work plan that they went through to create that. Coming along will be math and behavioral support recommendations from the state as well. But the ELA, or English Language Arts document is already online. And that's helpful. It validates a lot of our practices in the way that we're working, so.
How does it, sorry, another question. How does that marry up with what we're already doing?
Absolutely. Well, you know, I wish I'd included one more slide. I keep doing this picture with my fingers of a pyramid, but we'll get there, because we're talking about RTI, or multi-tiered support systems in a minute. But it works for English Language Arts or in the other area, curricular area as well, where you have that foundation for all students, the interventions or additional doses and supports in this way. And also classroom teachers do this differentiation when they meet with guided reading groups. So when they have additional help outside of that in a small group, that's like a whole other layer. Using those interventions that are listed in the ELA Best Practices, it would be like, small group, extra time is a big one. Summer school.
Strategies, I guess.
So it doesn't get more specific than that?
Well, it can, so if you think about balanced literacy for all kids, which includes, you know, whole group, small group, specific interventions, shared reading, guided reading, you know, all of that, all kids are getting that. It's all scaffolded. So every child would have, with real literature, not with, you know, a basal or some anthology, but real books are involved with all of that. They're reading in just right levels. They have book boxes that they practice in. Then if I need more interventions, what slips in, Funtas and Penel is the very same philosophy, but the intervention gets slipped in then, based on the running record, what your diagnosis is, then that's what I target, but it's delivered in a very similar way, because it's delivered in small group. So I'm used to my little guided reading group. Now I've got a different teacher for that guided reading group and it's very specific, but it's part of the whole. It's a very targeted intervention, so it builds off. And I'm still gaining opportunity to listen to the read alouds, participate in the shared readings, to do the reciprocal business with the writing. So it builds up that, if that makes sense.
Yes. Yeah, it's a really good question. I think too, that when I looked at the Best Practices menu, there was lots of affirmations, the way they describe it. Sometimes like Kathleen's doing, that's where the richness is. So you'll hear something, I say, hmm, I'm going to read that and understand it. And then it's the how it's delivered that makes all the difference. And I feel like I know from what I've seen and what I'm talking with principals about, that that's the way that we're doing. So there's fidelity, because the one thing that came through that ELA Best Practices was fidelity, fidelity, fidelity. So you can do something, but if you're not really putting it into practice the way that it's meant to be, you're not going to get the outcomes. Intensive interventions is one addition that we're talking with teacher teams about and principals, because it relates to the parent participation. So really involving parents in, okay, we're moving on now to third grade. Here's what it's already, what we've been trying, here are the results we're getting. Let's look ahead to fourth grade. Let's talk summer. So doing that partnership in those conversations is important. Readiness to learn and parent partnership has a place within LAP now, which firmly hasn't. It used to just be readiness to learn was its own. And that's where some of the funding increases came. And title, there was a parent component. But it's nice to see evidence here at the state level now with readiness to learn becoming a part of the LAP focus. So for us, that's continuing to support the natural leaders. We have 11 of our natural leaders, pretty exciting. They're connected with WOCS and going to the training. I mean, that is super powerful, super powerful. I'm just hearing about a lot of strong things happening at the schools where the natural leaders are working. And then Myella and Elizabeth are going to go participate as parts. They've got a little bit ELL and a little bit LAP. But I'm going to fund it out of ELL for them to go to the positive discipline training. And it's a lot of the same support in language that Dr. Cook is giving our teachers and our school teams. And it's in Spanish, so it'll be training with trainers. So they are super excited about that. So it's a really neat mention. Speaking of English language learners. It's a combination. So you hear about Title III, that's federal. And you hear about TBIP, and that's state. But they come together to be the total package for what, the program that we provide our English language learners. So just give you a minute to kind of see how the funding sources fit into the whole program.
TBIP.
Trans, by, wing.
Transitional by level.
Transitional by.
What's the?
The structural.
Intercessive by level. There are so many acronyms I've had to use. Do I know what it is, but it's like?
What is the exact one?
You might talk a little bit about Level 4.
Yes. So again, you've got little set-asides and pots and things that can go for this, but not for that. And I shouldn't sit on my hands. Sitting on the tutoring. Total physical stuff. So for the state level, lots, in fact, almost all going directly into staffing, which is where it's most needed. Level 4, that is the monitor level students. So kiddos that exited in 2000 this year or the year prior can get additional support if they're struggling. So we're just gearing up, you know, breaks just ended, or the semester just ended on the 23rd. And, you know, if I can get even faster ahead of that, I would love to get it out even sooner. But at the very least, give it out to principals and staff to see if there's any of our monitor students struggling that can get additional help either in the day or as tutoring after school. You can do professional development. You can get fairly creative in using that little pot of funds to support our monitor status students.
Well, I'm, do you know, am I correct that that is especially important? Because the way you exit from ELL is largely in speaking. It's not academic language. So kids sound pretty good, but they don't have the background in academic language. And the older they are, they need that vocabulary and support to access the curriculum. So that Level 4 group is really critical.
Good point. And they can sound conversationally like they have even stronger hold on the language than sometimes they will. And academic is, language is the last to come in. So you'll get that listening and speaking, and then comes the reading and the writing, but even not at that higher level that we would really want for them to be what we would call proficient. We hold an even higher standard instructurally. So that's one assessment, but what we want to be able to do, if you're a 10th grade high schooler and you pass the WOBA, that doesn't necessarily mean you have that academic hold on the language.
We've just noticed touring all other schools, we all have academic languages used to be in a psych, a great classroom.
Super rare.
And it's called Level 4 because that's the score you get in the book when you're writing?
Yeah.
And is it sufficient, is that sufficient funding?
That's a great question. Keep going. That's a great question.
But I think it's safe to say all of these programs are allocations that we receive that we then have to design programs around the dollars that we receive.
It's supplement, not supply.
Yeah, we're very strategic and then there's always, it's the same thing that I know we face on a general it. You know, there's always this much need and you say, okay, now how can we squeeze every last little piece out of that? We will be funding a TOSA for ELL support K-12. The timing wasn't right for that this year. It would have just been taken out of a building. And I'd rather wear a couple hats this year than do that. So we'll be reposting that. It's an essential position. This year we've had wonderful, certified staff saying, I'll take on that additional, or I'll do this project. And really building capacity among them. They've been phenomenal. So the work's still getting done in a creative, creative way. So key updates for this particular program. AMAO targets, annual measurable objectives, and they're going to begin with the acronyms. It's like, to me, the same thing as measuring the annual year of progress, only it's just for our English language learners. So really important goals. I remember the 1, 2, and the 3. The 1 is kids making growth with respect to themselves. You wouldn't want to see, whenever our ELL friends stay a Level 3 for life, you wouldn't want to see them stay stuck on a Level 1 and not advance to a 2 and 3. So that's the first target that we need to meet, and we're in good shape. AMAO 2 is the kids exiting. So are there, is there an adequate percentage of kids that are exiting the need for direct ELL services? Now, again, we already said that doesn't mean they're academic, they have that academic proficiency in language, but they don't need the same support for conversational language like they did. And we're great there too. AMAO 3 is where it is like, high-tech term, but it feels like a double whammy to me. Because AMAO 3 is where you say, okay, now this young person that doesn't have fully grasp academic language, we're going to take their measurement of student progress or their MSP, and now we're going to set a goal on whether or not enough kids that are still speaking English as a second language, they're still in ELL learner program, whether or not enough of them passed that state test with the academic language. So it's really a repeat of what we measure when we're measuring our ELL proficiencies and we're reporting it about adequately yearly progress. Does that make sense?
Do we get a breakdown of this when we're looking at board goals and when we can be different? Do we get this specific?
Well, we always look at English language learners. So when we look at English language learners and their performance on state assessments,
We're looking at Level 3.
That'd be the same kind of subset of data today in what game 3 is.
Yeah, 3 really gets covered with the way we report out on, well, this year released more balance, but MSP and our state measures, 3 is a repeat. And it just felt unfortunate to me as I listened to the webinar on it, it's like, oh gosh, we have to go through all that. And it makes sense to me. What I really want to know is that my, with respect to WOBA, is that AMAO 1 and 2, that we have enough kids making progress with respect to their own levels and exiting. Nobody asked. Nobody asked me and I'm not clean, so. English language proficiency standards are Common Core aligned, and it's a shift in thinking. The levels might change, so instead of the 1, 2, 3, 4, it might be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, is what it's looking like. But the beauty of it is it's aligned. One more change.
Like a little step in there.
The nice thing is they are differentiating when we look at that for newcomers. So Level 1 is teased apart, because a newcomer does have really different needs than a Level 1, you know. So, you know, there's benefits.
A little bit of logic.
And the alignment with the other Common Core areas allows people to use that document for differentiation. So that there's always a language objective when you're talking about your learning. There's always a language, reading, writing, speaking, listening, right? So being intentional about that and thinking, how do we give kids that are Level 2 the ability to show what they know and understand and not have them dinged for their language? They're smart and they do understand a lot. So how could we differentiate our work to really pull the best and get that engagement for them? And it's very aligned with the content areas, so there's a lot of promise with that. And then the task force is starting to wrap up, it feels like, with some recommendations. They were in effect last year and we've had a series of meetings this year as well. I'd say the biggest one is reviewing the John Swirt report. It was a huge piece of work for them to go through and look at roles and responsibilities for the different staff within ELL program. You were a part of this, so chime in anytime, but I'm just kind of summarizing everything.
The John Swirt report is, I'm not sure, I know that you've been on the board for a while. This was the report from the researchers from Washington State.
I think we did.
Yeah.
We didn't cut that in the briefing, right?
Yeah, because I'm not seeing it.
And there's one, there are a couple pages that are really key, so you get a lot to read, but they were the key recommendations.
It's a good story.
It was well done, and there was a lot of key recommendations, and then the task force took that and moved forward in making some additional recommendations. And how do we articulate our continuum of services? And how do we, you know, what models do we have? How do we align with the state and federal, what we know is best practice for English language learners? Another key piece was to minimize testing interference with curriculum. So our kids that are testing for WOBA aren't missing key instruction, but also so that the people giving the instruction aren't missing out on their other, like they're testing a first grader and then they're missing the chance to serve the third grader. How do you minimize that impact? So I think the task force did a nice job coming up with some plans, samples, options for schools. And then we launched WOBA testing this next Monday. And then when we're finished with that, we will ask what worked or what didn't, while it's fresh, resurvey the team.
So what does a new term mean?
Oh, okay, Washington. You have test means?
English language proficiency assessment.
Thank you.
And ELL students are so lucky, because they have to take all the state testing. And they have to take the, so the kids who struggle the most get the most tests.
Like I said, the double whammy.
So how long does the WOBA?
There are four sub-tests, and within each of those, there's at least two tests within that. So at least four days.
And some can be grouped.
Yes, some can be.
Happy.
The speaking is individually administered. Yeah, so it's hard to make that minimal impact. We decided to rely on schools were great about saying, here's what we need to make this work. So that's what we're doing. Budget and staffing recommendations that we're putting forward, a process. It looks like the way we've outlined it, that everybody felt would do, make recommendations on how to make the good faith effort and continually increase as our need grows, so does our model. And I think they did a really thoughtful job with how to do, what process to put in place. And ongoing oversight, kind of hearing a steering team that's representative from the ELL group to.
To write a report to now.
Create a work plan and a professional development outline that's revised annually and really kind of have multiple perspectives on the work we do as a whole team, so.
I'm interested in whether or not we lose students from that testing.
If we lose them to not come back to school, or if they just kind of turn off?
Impact that we haven't, yeah, not that it's our choice to administer it, but I'm curious.
Sometimes I think, you know, kids don't love the testing piece. I think what happens is our staff does a nice job mitigating that, because we really, really make sure that there were known folks and they set up that environment. And I think just having that person there, it doesn't feel, we'll give them snacks or whatever they can do that makes it kind of fun and celebratory, but I, yeah.
It's a poor kid who isn't proficient in the language, has a challenge taking tests. And then you're going to give them four additional days besides what they already do? I'm not thinking district though, I'm thinking.
Larger, right?
That there's something wrong with this.
I've always wondered, just to have that and then the grade level state testing in addition, it could be like a lot for our little guys. Well, you have to think about first grader, four days testing.
Well, they won't, excuse me, third grader. One parent on our task force just wanted to do what they don't test. So I would like to do that, but that's not by our purpose.
Do you guys have conversations of how you create services that meet the two very different types of ELL kiddos? The ones that are coming from countries with a very rich academic vocabulary before they said, put it in our school versus? Yeah, like kiddos coming.
That's a great question. A lot of the kids that I would serve would come from a refugee camp, which would be a really different experience than somebody who came and their parent was working at Microsoft when they had access. Yeah. I think that's where differentiation as a school system and really working, why it's so important to honor and respect what the schools are seeing, because they have that direct line. And when they create their school plans, I think that it's important.
We had a lot of discussion in task force, the importance of staff development for teachers, for all teachers. So if I'm a general education teacher, regardless of my content, secondary or elementary, how can I make it a language-rich environment? And the PSYOP strategies, shelter instruction. Another acronym.
I can explain what it is.
It's a great way to differentiate in teaching, but make it work for all kids. Good teaching is good teaching. So the language, the picture, all of that incorporating it. And it just is a real good way to invest our money, is to get the longest return for it.
And again, it matches up so nicely with balanced literacy, because kids are reading in just right books. So they're not being made to read. At elementary, this changes as they get into secondary, because it requires subject area stuff. But they're allowed to read at their pace, in their level, and get better. So those are common.
Great discussions, you have the difference between elementary and secondary. I know Sandy, you came the one day, we had a group discussion, and it was the right discussions to be having.
So are there any challenges you're seeing that you could use help on or anything?
But you're going to get the recommendations.
I thought the task force really did a nice job.
They really did.
They did a lot of hard work. It was actually a huge gift to me to come in and have those multiple lenses and have that work already in progress and not have to start and gather all of them. I think it's fairly succinct. It'll be just a couple pages. And then a chance that people want to dig deeper for more information, but I think the recommendations will be right on.
So when, do you have an idea when those will be ready?
I'm really curious. About them, okay.
We'll see.
There is finally, if you wanted to take a moment, look at it.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I'm really curious.
So just briefly, because originally we weren't going to really talk about special ed, because that's a whole big thing all on its own. It can take days. We really targeted something this past year of looking at what we call our mid-level programs or services at the elementary level. And we redesigned them to break them up so that we could better serve our students. And I will hand out, I'll keep one for myself, but this gives you a little explanation. This was something we put together for both parents and staff last year. That was the efforts that came out of the task force also. And we looked at our students who had some very unique needs that were currently being served in a classroom structure that really couldn't meet their needs. They were just so different. So we had students who had lower cognitive types of needs. We had students who had more sensory types of needs. In our last by visit, you all, those of you who went into the kindergarten center that we're in that lost with. And then we had students who really have truly social, emotional, mental health needs. And so we broke those up, instead of all those students being in the same classroom and trying to, it was just too much to differentiate each one of them. And so we have set them up in these models. And you've got descriptors in your pamphlet. You also have the locations of those services on the back of ones, which shows by school, what classrooms are where. And it's in the process of implementing, we've had some really good success. Have we been 100% wrist-bang everywhere? No, because we're learning and growing. We're investing a lot in staff development for our teachers, both our parents and teachers together. We've been working with some outside consultants with the University of Washington. And we're really excited about where it's going and what it's doing. So that's all I will share today, because again, it's quite involved in detail, but we can do more in future if we would like. Is that okay? Then the next piece has to talk about our multi-tiered system of services. So when you see MTSS, that's what it stands for. Another acronym that commonly gets linked with this is PBIS, Positive Thinking Interventional Supports. And the district is very graciously, we have invested some funds in that. The foundation has invested money in that and helps us to support Dr. Cook's effort, Dr. Cook from the University of Washington. And so this year, we're going down that road. And really, the key we look about that is, while we look at the academics, and that's real important, so are the social, emotional learning needs of students. And we find when we work on those in concert together, we get even better outcomes for students. So we started this year, and we have 11 schools in Coчат One. We plan to bring on everybody eventually, but we're doing this in a thoughtful, well-planned-out manner. And the 11 schools had to apply, made it a little bit competitive, which was kind of fun. They had to do an application and take it through their leadership team at their buildings. And so we've had four training sessions this year. We have two more to come up in March, and they have a work that they have to do in between each of them. Home school work, and then they come back and share with the others, so we learn from each other. We're interviewing tomorrow afternoon for an intervention specialist. We're really excited. excited, we, we'll help end the implementation and supporting teachers back in the schoolhouse on this. We didn't think we'd get any applicants, but we've gotten some really good ones, so we're really excited for that. And we're also looking at using some of that funding to explore either contracting for mental health services. At this point, until we get better grounded in what we want to do, we really don't want to hire internal people on staff, plus when you contract the supervision piece, that's so critical for mental health workers, comes with that contract versus us supervising them and they have a little different arena that they, their work, that they do is a little different than typically the schools do.
Are you looking at counselors, mental health licensed counselors, are you looking at
They're all special, but well
Well, yeah, yeah, and what, what would they be working on?
Well, again, we're going at this thoughtfully and so as we talk with mental health, so looking at students who are in crisis and need that intervention or referral to outside, other outside sources. We're not going to be the end-all and we don't want to have someone on school staff that, "kids in crisis, come down, I'll get you 30 minutes," and they have to go back and do math, you know, that's not the best kind of model, so it's how do we link them to identify the need and then refer out that's appropriate? Or can we do something in-house for X number of sessions, either after the school day or prior to school day, doesn't impact their learning.
Glad to hear that the legislature seems to have mental health on their agenda too.
Who, who does the legislature? Yes, they do, there's a lot out there, it's alive and well and Dr. Cook is right in the middle of all of this, so we've got a nice old connection. So the key pieces of it, you can probably just scroll them all up, is we want to have a continuum-based intervention, so as Janelle referenced earlier, we're starting up down this road of our tier one, what's the, the practices that need to be in place to reach the largest majority of students and then those that are still struggling that go into that tier two, what additional supports, like intervention services or the mental health services? We want it to be culturally responsive, we want to collect data, so we're making decisions not just based on gut, "I think this is working" or "I think kids are getting better," we're going to keep good, modifiable data to make those decisions and then we want to treat students and really look at their social, emotional needs in addition to their activity.
So you may have seen in Sunday's paper, the article talking about sort of the shift of discipline, I think that they were highlighting, highlighting some of the work they've done there and there was an earlier article a month or two ago with a similar theme, so a lot of what the schools, 11 schools in the MTSS are going through is some real self-examination of those kinds of issues, what do they believe about the responsibility of staff and kids to create a positive culture in the school, how do we view misbehavior, what are its sources, what can we do proactively about it and then how do we respond to it? And that's pretty challenging for, for lots of folks who believe that kids have a responsibility to come to school prepared to learn, it's not my responsibility to do that when they misbehave, there needs to be consequence, you know, you gotta kind of turn that on its ear a little bit or at least have a healthy examination of that. So I really applaud those 11 schools who are leaning into that, because those can be difficult conversations to
His wife is Copeny?
Yes. And Gary
It's a huge
I think we saw some of that, what the, some of the supporting documents in the Lockwood.
Yes, Gary shared his, at least some of their results when they were out there, which I thought was really brave of him to include that in his packet of, because there were some of those very kinds of responses, "kids just need to come in and learn," I mean, you know, "why do I have to?" So that's
Not my job to do that.
And I, I love that they're discussing that.
Everybody's very excited about it.
I think that was, yeah, for us and so then it goes to elementary.
Okay, so in addition to title and lab, because as you've heard, those schools all have interventions and they're arranged from during the school day, after the school day, during summer, et cetera. There are actually nine other schools, there were seven when I made the slide and two got their information in, they're late, they're like, oh wait, wait, nine other schools who do not qualify for those funds necessarily have other things going on, so I just made a sheet and listed them. They're paid for, principals discretionary fund, the building fund, academic clubs, PTA kicks in for various after-school, before-school tutoring kind of stuff, so I'll just pass the other ones. Okay, thanks. Often we see that even though I might not be titled school or a lab school, I still have a few kids that need support and I need to find ways to get that done and principals and staff are really dialing into that. Some of these you'll see are volunteer, the teachers decide that they're going to be available for before-school tutoring and after-school tutoring just because they think they should, so, you know, it's again, designed to meet the needs of the kids that they have despite the amount of funding that they've got going, so.
And it's fair to say Kathleen, that some of what they end up providing, the design of it is largely driven by what they can get staff in the building to be able to connect to.
Uh huh, it is, and the smaller schools on the east side have a bigger problem with that because they've got a small staff to start with, they're spread really thin on SDLTs and, you know, bus duty and all the other stuff that has to go and then that's still the same group that, well, can you stay after or come early or give up lunch or those kinds of things. So they have to accommodate some of what they can do around staff availability, but others have gotten a little creative with parents to do some remedial stuff with people that want the extra hour or two, so there's all kinds of models out there trying to figure out how to help kids. Do you know how much before or after, maybe like the timeframe, is it a half an hour, an hour? It, it ranges, I'd say on average, it's like a half an hour, 45 minutes to a half an hour either way. And it depends on if I'm a Woodmore and I'm a really, I get out really late, I do it before school, if I'm an early school, then maybe I've got time after to do that. Many of them have lunch bunch and, you know, recess help and stuff like that during the school day so that they can And are we providing transportation for this? No, no. So it's just the kids have to really get their rights? Right, well, that's another challenge because we don't have the transportation dollars. And do you think we are losing kids because we can't get them there or get them home? Are kids opting out of this? Well, you know, if we, if we've got kids that, some of the kids that need it the most have the least flexibility around parents that can drive them or stay late or come back to get them or those kinds of things, well, sure.
Is this a comprehensiveness, because I believe at Copeny, there's several other programs.
They are, and they're funded out of title and lab.
These are non-lab.
These are just non-
I don't know, like Copeny was a lab
Lab school.
They are.
All elementary, so.
So Copeny is entitled, but they are in lab and
So like their RAS kids would be funded out, because they have RAS kids there and then they have the Costco tutoring program that comes in, yeah?
Yeah.
They do have additional.
Okay, so there may be more that she didn't
Put down.
Put there, but yes.
I just noticed Gianna's in the benefit share.
Yes, so what I did was send principals, if you are funding some kind of intervention program outside title, lab, ELL, send me the list, so depending on how they're, as Janelle said, they all cobble those dollars together.
Very creative.
You know, very creative about what they can get from this little pot and that pot and make that happen, so, yeah.
Nice question, there's a lot of text lab, they might be doing different reading things, but it's not, it's not that they have to do just the level literacy intervention, so to reach more kids sometimes they'll get really creative, but I would imagine it's good.
Secondary.
We need to have handouts. Handouts.
I put North Creek.
Yeah, there it is.
How quickly it's been built.
It's bad.
So secondary, we tried to break it up into what the building is funding and again, those building funds are through principals discretionary or through a pool of funds that the SDLT leadership team is to determine how those funds will be spent and stipends. And then we also referenced the money that we are spending from the district, this year we allocated approximately $65,000 for interventions, 712, and then also you'll see on the bottom of the junior high portion, portion, we allocated about $80,000 for activity buses and you'll see the breakdown, the Powell's activity buses are being used across the six junior highs and what days of week they are. The secondary intervention programs really are based on what the needs of the school are and so they're all a little different. We don't have any, anything systemic in place that's across all six junior highs because it's really based on the culture of the school, the individual student needs and then what the teachers and the principal determine are the needs at that time. One of the things where, you know, semester ended last week, so we are, we'll be tracking data on many of these programs because we'll know if that program did what they intended to do, the intended outcome, was it met, does the data show that? Because we need to track data, often it's just, well, I think this is doing well or I'm not sure, but if we have data to look at, it's easier to support the use of the funds in the future or not. So all of the programs that we, the money we've allocated for the, from the district, I asked them to do some data tracking and said, you know, you really should be doing this in your own building too with the funds you're spending, so it will be a good discussion to have next week or I guess in three weeks at our principals' meetings to see what data they track and is it indeed making a difference.
So a month with that, I, I really appreciate that because I think that's really the information that when we had these conversations before, I felt like we weren't getting, that we didn't really know which programs, okay, we have all these programs, it's working, is there a way that you can put that information into a board briefing once you get it? Like which are, I mean, I feel really interested to know what's working and then when we see the achievement gap, okay, now is that closing if these programs are working, is that affecting?
Yes, I can put something together for you.
When you have it, I mean, it's not like an urgency thing.
For lab, the after report, you know, just all puts together the nice white kid, all that kind of stuff, so we have quite a
I think some of this we didn't have before, right? We didn't have data for it.
No, 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 we have not really been tracking data on these programs. The hangtime program at the three junior highs at Skyview, North Shore Junior High and Kenmore, they would have data about how many students attended.
Right.
But we don't correlate that back to academic achievement. We'd have to think about how that would look and how we can do that. But that money is from our community schools grant and so that money comes in through community schools, which is a great after-school program for our kids, but we track attendance, how many are there and then we certainly could draw a correlation, you know, with grades and is it making a difference or not, might be some surveys or something.
One way of doing it is school board performance measure 1.7, which is how many students are on track by the end of ninth grade, because that's looking at, so what you want to know are all these things making a difference, so that they can be on track, meaning if it's for content area, credits, math, science, English and social studies and Washington State might need a ninth grade.
So that would be part of that study session?
You could, yes.
I mean, we'd have to correlate, you know, we'd have to figure out how, you know
It would be helpful, I think, because we talk about the achievement gap, but it's hard to put these programs with, are we making an impact?
That's why we're talking about it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And it's also, some of these programs, kids go in and out because it's based on you're missing assignments per se, so lunch table, maybe that you're attending lunch table for the next two weeks because you have this many missing assignments in all your classes and we pull that data off the data dashboard system and so then they're assigned for two weeks and then if they reduce the number of missing assignments, then they get to go out of lunch table and back and so some of that's going to be hard to track over time and to draw a correlation. Ultimately, our goal is we want students to be making progress and we want them to be doing their assignments, we want them to be getting academic credit at the end, earning that academic credit at the end of the semester. The other one thing about, we did, we have referenced time and time again, the high schools, the academic interventions during the day and we implemented Apex, as I've mentioned before, at all three of the schools during the school day because we don't have transportation provided after school and oftentimes these students are not the ones that are able to stay after or to access transportation home or they have jobs or they're taking care of family members. And so by implementing Apex for at least one section during the day, we've been able to get students have been able to do credit retrieval instead of having to do it after school for a few, so that's been instrumental in helping more of our students get back on track towards graduation.
And don't they miss something else?
Yes.
It's a lot of
It's a lot of
Yes.
It's a lot of
But if a student Yeah, if a student is really on top of things and is motivated, we have some students earning up to 1.0 credit retrieval during the semester, some of them 1.5. That's not everybody, but there are some that are able to do that and I think the incentive, we try to provide incentives for them.
So just kind of thinking out loud, I'm noticing Woodinville does it as a seventh period class, I wonder if we want to look at as a continuum roll out seventh period as part of this work of helping kids to be able to graduate on time, providing an extra period, that, that should kind of be part of our data as we're looking at it.
Yeah, they are actually looking at moving it into the school day next year because the seventh period, again, there's no transportation, so they do feel like they're missing some students, so it was a trial run on the seventh period to see whether that worked or not.
I was telling these guys, really, there was an article on NPR today, a child at Taiyi High School, an ELL learner was interviewed around this science requirement and saying how difficult it is for him to access the language and demonstrate his knowledge of science and also how hard it is because he has to work to be able to stay later to get more support because he's trying to help support his family, so it's just, it just was timely today that we were, those kids really are out there trying to make all this work.
On top of all of this that you see that has dollars attached to it, the, our teachers are incredible and they do so much on their own individually, one-on-one with kids, after school, before school. I was over at Woodinville this morning, was walking the halls with Currie and there was a social space teacher that was having a one-on-one with a senior in the hallway and it said, "now I'm going to see you after school, right? Two o'clock, my room, two o'clock, you have that assignment you need to make up, I'm not turning grades until tomorrow, two o'clock, I need you there." You know, so the amount of energy that they put into just one-on-one with students, which cannot be reflected in any piece of data or
Just in time intervention.
Yeah, and that happens across our system with all of our teachers, so.
Why is, I mean, KFRI's budget so small?
Again, they, so they're accessing 2,100 out of their, or where are they, 20 glasses on, 2,100 out of the building budget. Larry mentioned earlier about staff capacity and certainly there are funds available if Canyon Park needs, would like to do more interventions or implement more interventions for students. They needed to come to me and ask for that money and write a proposal and so they have not identified that there's an additional need at this time or have, do not have staff capacity that can implement something, I hear that often from principals.
It just seems considerable.
What I also think with respect to Canyon Park, having been there for that, that reflects the cost of the assistants who are there to supervise, but I think their actual teachers come in and volunteer.
I was going to say that same thing, remember our board was last year and they were getting a lot of bang out of that, teachers were just doing that and plus Canyon Park has a lot of co-teaching going on and so that's a really powerful intervention every day that
That would be interesting to see, is that co-teaching making an impact?
Well, the other dollar figure is hangtime, if you look at Kenmore, North Shore and Skyview and you pull out the hangtime dollars, then the dollars are a little bit much more.
And the junior high principals with Heather last Friday had a really rich discussion about next steps, they want to see how the semester ends with the grades are like and they've talked about, you know, it's not credit recovery, but it's
Well, it's in essence, in essence, credit recovery is looking at the academic grades for specifically our ninth grade class and where did the students not earn credit and are there specific performance standards that we can tease out of that and so if a student just is missing one or two standards, can we then put something in place in the next eight weeks for those students to go back and recover just those specific standards that they missed and they go back and award credit and so
Versus doing a whole class.
Right, yeah, we're working on what that will look like and then providing, I can provide some funds for the teachers to work individually with those students and so we had a great discussion around what that would look like, so grades are due, I think, Thursday and so we have an opportunity to really tease out what are the subject areas at the ninth grade level that students are struggling most in and then have a network discussion on how to support those students.
Looking a lot like standard-based grading.
Yeah, that's great, absolutely.
Is it, one more question, Englemore's at 50, and I realize it's their own choices, but they're spending $53,000. I seem to remember being at Englemore, and correct me if I'm wrong, but their achievement gap was closer?
That was a year
It was a year, I remember pulling it out after.
And that again was a, they have biking time, which they're trying for the first time this year where their principal and SDLT where their principal and SDLT looked at how to support students during the day, and they pulled out a .6 out of their stopping allocation into this specific program. And they're doing a lot of data tracking on that to see if that is working. And then we've done, they've already done some modifications along the way.
Is that during the day also?
It is during the day. So, there's a section for 10th graders, a section for 11th graders, and a section for 12th graders. And they have a teacher assigned to those three sections. So, that was a decision that their SDLT made with their principal. Does it drive up class sizes in other ways? And yes, it does in some other places that you're studying. There's trade-offs. There's trade-offs.
Not necessarily 36,000 new dollars or additional money.
No, no. Okay.
And just change where you're putting it on.
Yes, yes. Change where the allocation's going. So, these classes, we only have 15 to 16 students, so then the process is that it'll drive up something.
It's really nice to see a lot of these things coming back, because for Janet and Dawn were on the board during the time. When all the I-728 monies went away, largely that was funding all of these kinds of interventions and supports. And so, those really went down to minimal, and now we're really starting to see them kind of build back up again, which is nice.
Yay.
So, this was your, your goal, to get kind of smarter about all of these intervention systems and supports that we have placed across the district, and it's, there's a lot of stuff. So, I guess I would ask you, if you'd like, you've got a good start on this? Is there, is there other, other things that you're curious about that we didn't touch on? I know the whole special ed arena is like, is on?
Animal.
Animal.
I'm, I'm looking forward to recommendations, because I think that, as we've seen in all of the data that we've seen with these schools, there's a need to close that gap and.
Recommendations from the ELL network?
From the ELL task force. And also to hear, you know, what your recommendations are, what your needs are. I asked a couple of questions about what, what funding is. So, what you need to really make some, some additional interventions to, what you see as necessary.
You know, and just to help me solidify my mind, because I, so I-728 went away. And these, and it was, a lot of these interventions unfortunately had to fall by the wayside. And we're bringing them back. Are we bringing them back in any different ways? Like, is there anything different than, I'm just kind of curious, so.
So, the literacy, literacy in the things, the alignment of the Fonda's and Penel kits and the consistency across the district with that. If kids need intervention, here's how this works, is one example. PBIS is another example for trying to support the emotional, social climate in a place so kids have optimal learning.
I'd say that online learning is much more rigorous, thanks to the, to the state and some parameters of what programs and service providers that we could utilize. So, it's post Novanet, which is.
That's not good.
Which was painfully, woefully inadequate. So, our online courses and things are much more aligned to standards.
And I would say something like Brad Alliance is fill the gap where we used to just give X amount of staffing to each high school and say, kind of, "Go do your own retrieval type program." And so, now we've actually kind of removed that, you know, put that into a centralized district program along a continuum of services. That makes a bit more sense and really uses a little bit of that pressure off my school.
And if I could summarize, I'd say that continuum of services is what's different, because many elementary schools, you know, were operating under the, "I never met a program I didn't like." So, if this one came through, okay, we're doing that, and okay, we're doing this, and all right, we're trying that. And then collecting data around it was sort of, around that feel-good, it should. And that continuum of, we're going to start with this, and here's what you do second, here's what you're going to do third, is across the district now in a much different way, as Larry says. So that there are, they've gone through CMAC approval, there are interventions that are okay to use. There are a whole lot that we don't even want you to worry about, because they're not going to meet the needs of our kids.
Some of that's been, you know, work with the PTAs, used to fund a lot of those kinds of things that were important to their school communities, but weren't necessarily aligned to the larger district. And the district weren't necessarily as aligned as we are now. So, I think that's improved a little bit. And I would say since Carmen's here, the work with the foundation as well. The foundation really, you know, they're not out there sort of seeing what people want to do. They're really starting with the district. What are our needs, and then driving out resources through there. So, I just think the whole alignment piece is much stronger than it.
Sounds like a more efficient use of resources.
Well, now, Woodville Library is another example. They were giving money to Woodin for a really long time. And, and tell, you know, they had worked with the Otter program and other just stuff that now they're, they're fully aligned around the needs for books and literacy. And they started here, and now they're giving away to Woodmore and Woodin. So, that very same idea, that even our service organizations are approaching it differently.
I think, I just want to say, I wasn't here prior to when all that was happening, this history. But what I, what I feel is really powerful is, we're all a team. And it's not special ed, interventions, basic ed. We're all together, and we're supporting each other, and that's where that continuum of services comes in. So, we're not in isolation. And to me, that's, we're all going out and giving consistent, same messages, and we're really seeing the benefits of that.
And I think CMAC's really helped us in getting aligned, so we know that we want consistency across for that, for all kids. And then we start looking at where supplemental needs to be for the next level. We can't look at supplemental until we really have a strong base.
They're only as good as your core.
Right, so that's really important.
And just speaking to the, to when the board did make decisions to cut some of this stuff, as you may or may not recall, I recall vividly, we had millions of dollars that we had to drill from the budget. And what we found with some of the programs was just what Kathleen was saying, the misalignment between what was needed and what was provided. And so, that's kind of the history of it.
It was painful, but in some ways it helped.
It was incredibly painful. But there was no direct evidence, I think, I would say, that, that what was there was working. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it was, I, not, that's not completely accurate, I understand that. But just when we were trying to decide what programs were supportable or not.
Yeah, and just to figure it out, I would use the lasers at the elementary as the great example of that. I mean, it was a very highly pride, you know.
Regarded.
Regarded staffing resource that was in all of our elementary schools. And what we didn't see when we got rid of the lasers was, was reading scores go off the table. So, there are some interesting ah-hahs about that. Now, does that mean that it was never doing any good? I don't think you could draw that conclusion. But did people step up and own all of their kids a little bit differently now that that resource wasn't there? And did we do a better job supporting them, you know, through the district literacy program? You know, I think there's a number of factors there, but those were, those were hard.
I think right now, it's, I appreciate that you must be intentional with your approach, and really thoughtfully determining whether or not it is a good match. Definitely.
Great of the students.
I really appreciate the data and the presentation, just a couple things that I have written down. It's, we're becoming more ethnically diverse, and so, we're targeting students with the ELL programs and with the natural leaders. But are we missing students in there, and how are we targeting families? So, because, and some students might speak the English language proficiently, especially when they're younger. And so, but that doesn't mean, like you said, that academically, but they might not be in that program necessarily. And then.
So, I think that's where good progress monitoring really helps. So, if we could look at things like our individualized running records, and then to our mental district math assessments, those kinds of things that, you know, the kid is neutral. You know, whether the student's an English language learner, whether they come from a family of poverty or a family of wealth, the data is what drives the intervention.